Hulu, Netflix, Peacock, Amazon Prime, Disney Plus. Streaming media services change not only people's viewing habits, but also change the dynamics facing WCTV. Content is tailored to specific viewer interests, which for the viewer is a good thing. It allows people to cut the cord and eliminate programming they neither watch or need. An unforeseen consequence is that it impacts WCTV in a very challenging and costly way.
WCTV is funded almost entirely by a percentage of cable company's revenues based off the amount of cable subscribers we have in Wilmington. In short, less cable subscribers equals less revenue for WCTV. If you utilize any of WCTV's resources by creating your own program or watching local meetings and sports online and you are not a cable subscriber, there is a way to help. I hope you will consider making a donation so that we can continue delivering these programs and more to you. For those of you who have made a donation, I thank you. We do receive these and we are very appreciative. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00. We call the meeting to order, April 26, 2021. Start off by reading the governor's orders of COVID-19 suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 38, subsection 18, imposing strict limitations on the number of people who may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV is live on Channel 9, Comcast, Xfinity, and Channel 37, Verizon 5s. And they're also streaming live at wctv.org. No in-person attendance or members of the public other than individuals with scheduled appointments will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may also do so by telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter the meeting ID 845-988-4911, then press pound, then press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment. By following the steps previously noted, then press star 9 on your telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in a queue in the order in which they have entered the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. And with that, good evening to all of you. Call for the roll call. Myself, Selectman Kyra is present, Selectman DePalma is present, Selectman Omahoney is present, and tonight we want to welcome Selectman Misselli. Good evening to you and welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
And so congratulations to all of the winners of the election and congratulations to all who were willing to participate. First of all, I want to thank each member for wearing an article of blue in recognition of autism awareness. And before we start, I just wanted to acknowledge that I have not anointed myself chair of the board, but rather I find myself as the previous past chairman with the election of Jonathan Eaton to our new town moderator. We will reorganize as we always do after town meeting and that will happen on May 10. Until then, you're stuck with me tonight.
You look good there.
If we could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The second item on the agenda is transmitting of Treasury warrants, 42, 42A, 42B, 43, and 43A. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. We have no approval of minutes this evening, so we'll move right into our appointments. Our first appointment this evening is a discussion and assignment of motions for the annual town meeting, which is taking place this Saturday, May 1st, 9:00 a.m. at the Schreiner's Auditorium. Mr. Hall, could you start us off, please?
Yes. With regard to the assignment of motions, as is practiced prior to the town meeting, the various articles that are slated to be considered at town meeting, of course, we each have a motion and members of the board are each assigned a motion. There are some items to be considered, for example, Article 5, which is the budget article that will be handled by the Finance Committee Chair. Others in the warrant will be handled by the Planning Board, and then still others, our petition articles will be handled by the petitioners. And school committee articles will be handled by Representative for the School Committee. But by and large, a significant portion of the articles will be handled by the Board of Selectmen. This contemplated assignment of articles is based upon taking up each article individually. As was the case last year, what we called was a consent agenda that was ultimately used. There's been a number of conversations, Zoom sessions, between myself, the acting chair, Bendel, Jonathan Eaton, Town Council, to consider the prospect of a consent agenda. Just by way of information, the idea with a consent agenda is to provide some measure of efficiency, if you will, for moving the process along while at the same time not taking anyone's right away to debate any particular articles. Just by way of example, what's being considered at this point is potentially taking up articles 247, 89, 10, 12, 13, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, 24, 25, 26, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 41. Many of these articles are articles that generally speaking do not tend to create a lot of debate. Article 2, for example, is hearing of reports. There will be no reports to be heard this year. Article 4, compensating balances. Some of the articles, although do consider appropriations, other articles, for example, like the July 4th appropriation, Memorial and Veterans Day services, lease of space for the VFW, the American Legion, generally do not engender a lot of debate. Notwithstanding that, if a consent agenda is used, it still allows for participants at town meeting to raise questions or engage in discussions of any of the articles that may be under the consent umbrella, so to speak. The expectation is that there will be another Zoom session with the town moderator, Mr. Selectman Bendel, Town Council, myself and others, town clerk, to reach a final consensus on articles that we would like to see brought forward as consent, as a consent agenda. So in the event that that takes place and that these articles that I referenced or some version thereof are considered in a consent agenda, then I will provide a revised assignment of warrant articles that will go out with your package of information and be delivered prior to town meeting.
Mr. Hall, if I may interrupt you. I would imagine that there might be some questions or comments on this, but if we could put a pause to this conversation so that we can get to our 7:10 public hearing, that would be greatly appreciated. I don't know if the applicants here in the room. And then I would imagine we can take it up after that if people have questions. I know I might. If there is no objection, we'll put a pause to this for a moment.
No objection.
Thank you very much. Seeing that it is 7:10, we'll welcome our 7:10 appointment, Mr. Charles Ugaletto. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Ugaletto is from 36 Johnson Road LLC. Regarding this is a public hearing relative to the request for a flammable license for the property located at 36 Johnson Road. And with that, I'll open the public meeting and welcome you, sir. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening to you and everyone else.
Why don't you tell us why you're here and a little bit about your request, please?
Sure. I am the owner of Coffee Oil and Energy. We're a service provider serving the metro of Boston since 1945. We deliver biofuel, we broken nap gas, and we provide HBC services to residential and commercial properties throughout greater Boston. I bought the property here in Wilmington to move my business from Somerville. We had outgrown the space and so part of that is the fleet of delivery trucks that we have on-site that we use to provide high delivery services with. So the request is to store that fuel in addition to, we have fuel in the building that we use for heating. We have a diesel tank to fuel our trucks. And that's the genesis of the request.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hall, we have, do we have recommendations?
Yes, we do. We have a recommendation from Alice Paul, the building inspector. He knows the building department has no issues with the application for above-ground storage flammables by Charles J. Ugaletto, 36 Johnson Road LLC, 36 MAP R1, parcel 306D. Then we also have a recommendation from Valerie Gingrich for structural planning and conservation. A proposal is for above-ground storage flammables in parked trucks and inside the building. The owner of the site received planning board approval in 2019 to install two overhead drive-in doors on the side of the building and remove an area of pavement to compensate for additional pavement associated with the new doors. Any additional changes to the exterior of the building or the site, including exterior storage tanks, would need to be reviewed by the planning board. I have no additional comments on the license request.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll open it up to the board. Does anybody have a question or comment? Mr. DePalma.
In the package we received, I didn't see any notification from the fire department.
Mr. Chair, I want to just clarify that on page 2. Fire department is only is approval from the fire chief.
I apologize. No problem. Okay, so we have a positive recommendation from the fire chief. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one question. I just want to confirm that we've received no communication from any abutters. It looks like there's a list of the abutters notified. I just want to confirm that we haven't heard from any of them with any concerns.
That's correct. No comment.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. If there's no other comments or questions from the board, I'll open up. This is a public hearing. I'll turn to our IT Director, Mr. O'Neil. If there anybody who would like to call in, I'll remind folks that if you'd like to make a public comment, you can dial in using the number 1-646-558-8656 and enter the meeting ID 845-988-4911, then press pound, press pound again. And then if you want to notify the meeting host, Mr. O'Neil, that you want to be, to speak, you can raise your hand virtually by pressing star 9 on the keypad. The instructions are on the screen. Mr. O'Neil, do we have any callers?
Mr. Chair, we currently have no callers.
Okay, I'll just give it a minute if that's okay for everyone. Again, if you wish to call in on this portion of the public hearing, please follow the instructions as you can see on screen thanks to our friends with WCTV.
There are no callers, Mr. Chair.
No callers. Okay. Right. Well, at that, with that, then I will, before we take up the application, I'll take a vote to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Second. Motion's been made by Mr. Kyra, seconded by Mr. DePalma. All those in favor, closing the public hearing? That is unanimous. The hearing is closed. So at this time, would anybody like to offer a motion to grant the request?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor Chris West.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion's been made by Mr. DePalma, seconded by Mrs. Omahoney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. So thank you very much, Mr. Ugaletto, and we appreciate you choosing to do business in Wilmington.
Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate your time.
Welcome to Wilmington.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too, Mr. Hall.
Okay. With just a few minutes, with just myself or anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. With just a few minutes before the start of our second public hearing, our third appointment for the night, I just want to remind folks one last time that if you decide you'd like to make a comment about this particular upcoming public hearing relative to a request to amend the all liquor license, all alcohol license for NR Wilmington Corporation, DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirit property located at 258 Main Street, please call in using the number 1-646-558-8656 and enter the meeting ID 845-988-4911, then press pound and pound again. Star 9 will let the host know that you wish to speak. So we're just a few minutes ahead of time, Mr. O'Neil. I know we're expecting some guests virtually. Do we have everybody we're expecting?
Can you do it?
Great. I think I see two people join us virtually.
Yes, we have Mr. Patel and Mrs. O'Connor.
Great.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Well, I think it's okay if there's no objection from the board. We'll get started two minutes early. We want to welcome you folks. This is a public hearing relative to the request to amend the all alcohol license for NR Wilmington Corporation, DBA Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirit for the property located at 258 Main Street. I'll open the public hearing and welcome you here to Wilmington Town Hall virtually. Good evening. Do you mind introducing yourselves and letting us know why you're here?
Certainly. My name is Mayor William Stanley O'Connor. I represent Kellech Patel as well as NR Wilmington Corporation. Mr. Patel, Kellech Patel is also on the call. And we have filed an application to amend the existing liquor license. Mr. Patel is a 50% owner of this store along with Kellech Patel. Mr. Kellech Patel has decided to buy all his partner, a fellow shareholder. He will become the 100% shareholder and Kellech Patel will be designed as treasurer and secretary and director. And Kellech will become treasurer and secretary and director. We're looking for the board's approval to do that. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor and Mr. Patel. Thank you for joining us. Can I ask you, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening to both of you again. All right. Is there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Hall, do we have recommendations?
There are no specific recommendations on this as the individuals involved, it's named one individual purchasing the other person's interest, so there's no recommendations
Great. Thank you. Mr. O'Neil, do we have any callers wishing to speak on this particular matter?
Mr. Chair, we currently have no callers.
Okay, we'll give it a minute if that's okay. We can put the number back up on the screen for anybody who might want to call in relative to this public hearing. Mr. O'Neil, do we have any callers?
No callers, Mr. Chair.
Okay. If there aren't any comments or questions from my colleagues, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Omahoney. All those in favor of closing the hearing? That is unanimous. Thank you. So at this time, thank you. Is it at this time, would anybody like to offer a motion to grant the request of the applicant?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Omahoney.
Awesome.
Seconded by Mr. Kyra. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Mrs. O'Connor, Mr. Patel, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a great evening. Thank you for joining us. Okay. And so I appreciate my colleagues' flexibility in trying to stick to the schedule, so if we could go back to our first appointment and continue the discussion regarding the assignment motions of the annual town meeting before our two public hearings tonight, which we wanted to make sure we stayed on schedule for. Mr. Hall was explaining the possibility of a consent agenda. Mr. Hall, perhaps we could just go back to that and give the opportunity for members to ask questions or make comments.
Sure. So specifically, just for the board's understanding, again, to put forward the articles that are least under consideration for part of a consent agenda. Article 2 is to hear reports. Article 4 is the compensating balance agreement. This is the banking language that is dealt with every year. Article 7 is a request to purchase voting machines, $35,000 from the tax levy, $10,000 to be drawn from an elections account that we have in existence. Article 8 is a voice-over IP phone system for $70,000. Article 9, public safety building, town hall servers, total amount there's $35,000. Article 10, mobile computers for the police department, $30,000. Article 12, radio alarms for the fire department, $55,000. Article 13, roof design for Shoshine Elementary School, $85,000. Article 16, robotics survey equipment, $25,500. Article 17, intersection design of the Shoshine-Hopkins-Lake intersection, $25,000. Article 18, a single installation at the intersection of Salem and Wilburn Street, $20,000. Article 20, engineering services for the high school track, $40,000. Article 21, cemetery fences associated with upgrades to the cemetery, $15,000. Article 22, municipal separate sewer system or MS4, $50,000. Article 24, Main Street sewer pump control panel, $40,000. I would note that that is from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Article 25, Shoshine comments pump replacement, $25,000, again, from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Article 26, appropriated funds received from the Uber and Lyft tax, $7,929.70. Article 36, to seek to appropriate funds for the fund on the 4th, in the event that that occurs, $50,000. Article 37, Memorial and Veterans Day services, $8,000. Article 38, lease of space for the VFW and American Legion, combined total of $1,500. The Article 39 is the incorporation of funds for PEG access, $525,000. This is not from the levy, but it's from the cable fees that are paid by subscribers. Article 41 is the Rink Enterprise Fund, which is, again, it's essentially establishing a limit as to the amount that could be drawn from a revolving account or went to exist, $526,000. Again, that's not from the levy. And I believe there's also consideration about including Article 40, which is the article that sets the limits for the amount that can be used for purchase of compost bins, $4,500, and for loans for septic tank replacement, which is $200,000. Those are the articles that are being considered for possible inclusion in a consent agenda.
And Mr. Hall, just to be clear, any resident or official who'd like to speak on any of these articles would still be able to do so?
That's right. So the expectation is, again, similar to what happened last year, is that the consent agenda could be put forward listing the particular articles to be under consideration. And if anyone wants to ask questions or raise concerns about one or more of those articles, they can do so during the course of that discussion.
And then just lastly, before this was considered a town meeting, would be taken up by the body at town meeting in the morning of?
That's right, the morning of.
So the residents who show up will decide if they want. And it will be explained, I would have to imagine it'll be explained by a moderator as it was in the past?
That's right.
Anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, just to, I understand that you can speak on it and discuss it, but they're also allowed to make an amendment to it if it's inappropriate.
Yes, that's right.
To those particular articles. Just want to make that clear, to mediate them as well.
That's right. And certainly if someone felt strongly that an article needed to be pulled out of this consent agenda and dealt with separately, a motion could be made to that effect as well.
Thank you, Scotty. Any other comments or questions?
So to be clear, this will be discussed at the, I'm sorry.
No, please.
This will be at the beginning of town meeting. This will be the first vote is whether we will take up these articles in a consent agenda forum. Or are we doing that tonight?
No. So tonight is really, the intent is to, first of all, inform the board about the order of articles in the event no consent agenda is offered, which is probably unlikely, but given that I didn't have any definitive consent agenda at the time of preparing this, this is what I went with. But then also to provide the board with information about the likelihood that a consent agenda will be put forward at the town meeting. At this point, it's, I can't say whether it will be, at what point it will be brought up, but certainly early on in the, in the meeting, since Article 2 is one of the articles under consideration here. I think one of the things we talked about in our Zoom conversations is the prospect of, as you know, Article 1 is the article regarding elections. The expectation is that a motion would be entertained following that article to recess the annual town meeting for the purpose of going into the special town meeting. And then if that is considered and ultimately approved, then the special town meeting, the three articles on the special town meeting would be considered. The special town meeting would be adjourned and then vote would be taken to re-enter annual town meeting, and I suspect around that time is when this would be brought forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And you recall, folks might recall that last year we had a consent agenda that was explained at the beginning. The body chose to go with the consent agenda. I think people liked it so much so that at one point a resident put forth another consent agenda in which was also approved by the body that was there. So this is in an effort to streamline some of the articles that we believe won't garner enough a lot of discussion or controversy, but certainly, again, it's worth pointing out again that if anyone is able to speak on any of the articles that they, or ask a question if they want to. Mr. Hall mentioned the Zoom meetings that we've had. That's just in preparation so that if the body at town meeting decides they want to go with the consent agenda, we'll be ready. If they decide they don't want to go with the consent agenda, we'll also be ready. So we're kind of preparing for whatever scenario is presented to us so that we can best present all the information to the voters.
Mr. Chair, just another question, just a curiosity question, I guess. You have thirteen in the following of the consent agendas. Is there a reason why you didn't put fourteen in that as well, just a replacement of ceiling tiles?
I think this size of the project, there is some consideration and concern expressed that the capital, the articles that were being proposed for expenditure for free cash, given the size of the appropriation request, that those should be considered separately.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Just to reiterate for folks at home, a couple of the examples of the articles that we're looking to combine. Just a few examples, approving of the funds for the Fourth of July celebration, Memorial Day and Veterans Day services, and funding the VFW and American Legion quarters for seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifteen hundred. So there's some examples of articles that traditionally don't garner a lot of discussion or debate. And that way, we can streamline it better to make it more welcoming for folks who don't want to, maybe can't give up twelve, fourteen hours a day. Are there any other comments, questions, concerns from the board? Okay, so Mr. Hall, we will be delivering the town meeting packets this weekend to the members of the board?
Yes, it'll be going out Friday, Friday afternoon. So everyone will have a police officer arriving at your door. So don't be anxious, just to deliver the package for Saturday's events.
That's right. And so we want to remind folks that the annual town meeting is this coming Saturday, May first, nine AM at the Shrine's Auditorium. We have sixty-four articles and also a special town meeting that will happen within the town meeting. And we estimate that that may take place around nine fifty, give or take. So we hope you all join us. All registered voters are welcome to attend and to participate in what I believe is the purest form of democracy at our annual town meeting. And our special thanks to the Shrines for hosting us and such a large venue and safe venue for everybody in attendance. Okay. Mr. Hall, could you take us through Communications, please?
Yes. First on Communications is a memo from me, just providing an update to the board. You'll recall, the last meeting, there was some discussion about the Textron property. I just wanted to advise the board members that I have spoken with a representative from National Development. They are the suitors, if you will, of a portion of the Textron property. Been informed that a purchase and sale agreement has been entered into between the parties, and they are rapidly approaching a purchase, that is, National Development. And in my conversations with the representative, I inquired about the prospect of a long-term lease. The representative was well aware of the town's interest in the property for recreational purposes, or at least specifically the tennis courts and the ball fields. And he indicated a willingness to consider a lease and work with the town to that effect. He indicated that over the next month, they will be working with Textron to, as I understand it, come to a final agreement on the arrangement. And then their next steps will be to seek permitting from local boards for their efforts to pursue warehousing. But there was an expression of interest, a willingness to pursue a lease. So I think that's good news for the town. Thank you. Next is correspondence from John McCarthy, Executive Director, Mass School Building Authority, regarding the vote to invite a statement of interest for the Wildwood Elementary School into the MSBA eligibility period. So you recall, there's been a number of discussions the last few months, and then prior to that, even last year, in terms of these statements of interest. And we were fortunate enough to be one of the select communities to be invited into this very first stage. There's a number of steps that will be taking place here. We will have two hundred and seventy days from July first forward to complete these particular tasks. And some of those tasks include establishing a building committee, similar to what was done when the high school was constructed, completing an educational profile questionnaire about the district, an online enrollment projections document. Clearly, the MSBA wants to know as much as possible about the district and developed enrollment projections, information about the district's maintenance and capital plan, how well we're maintaining our existing facilities. They'll be looking to have the town approve funding for a feasibility study. And this is going to be a key part of the program. And quite frankly, I would expect that in light of the fact that that two hundred and seventy-day period expires on March twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two, that will necessitate a special town meeting, the date to be determined. Frankly, my hope is that we're able to do it in perhaps early December as opposed to the earlier part of two thousand and twenty-two. But that remains to be seen. And then we will be, if we are able to get the funding that's required, we would enter into a feasibility agreement and then be considered for that phase of the project, which would be the feasibility study. Thank you. We have a letter from Jonathan Eaton. This is with regard to his intentions to resign from the Commission on Disabilities. I'll just read it to the record. Dear Town Clerk to O'Conway, it has been a pleasure serving this town as a member of the Commission on Disabilities since July two thousand and nineteen. Given my current other obligations, let this letter serve as my written notice of resignation from the Commission on Disabilities effective upon the expiration of my term on the Board of Selectmen on April twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one. As you know, I was eligible for appointment to the Commission on Disabilities as MGL Chapter Forty, Section Eight J permits that one member of said commission shall be either an elected or appointed official of the city or town. I've spoken with Selectman Palmer, who attended the January meeting of the Commission on Disabilities as an interested member of the public. And I hope that the Board of Selectmen consider appointing him to the Commission on Disabilities to serve in the same role as I have. If you should have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to call.
Thank you to Mr. Eaton for his service on us.
Is a letter from Paul Bruce, and also a letter from Ronald DiGiorgio, both seeking a request to be reappointed to constable. In the case of Mr. Bruce, he notes to Mr. Hall and the Board of Selectmen, I formally request of the Town of Wilmington, Mass, renew my constable appointment to the Town of Wilmington for the upcoming year two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Mr. DiGiorgio notes, please reappoint me as constable for the Town of Wilmington, Mass. I've been a constable in Wilmington since August twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-two. My bond is current, and I am still at the same address for forty-eight years. And he references that address, retired as a senior superior court officer from Superior Court after twenty-eight years, having four years added on the effect of being on the veteran's veteran's gave me full retirement. I now will be doing constable work full-time. I'm also bonded as a constable of Metzger, Woburn, and Cambridge. Thank you for your consideration. Next is a letter that was issued to J. Tomer, Vice Chair...
J. Dunham.
I'm sorry, J. Dunham, Vice Chair of the Democratic Town Committee. And this is with regard to the expiring seat on the registrar of voters. It notes, I am writing to and to the Board of Selectmen, applying to the MGL Chapter Fifty-One, Section Fifteen, as it pertains to the appointment of a member of the Board of Registars. Please accept this letter as official notice from the Board of Selectmen that the term of Mary H. Osgood, a member of the Board of Registars representing the Democratic Party, will expire at thirty-two thousand and twenty-one. Ms. Osgood has been, has expressed her interest in reappointment, then cites the particular provisional law. Please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any questions. From me. Then the next correspondence is from Mary H. Osgood. It's to whom I concern. For the past three years, I have been honored and privileged to serve on the Board of Registars as both member and currently as chairperson. It is my sincere desire to continue on the board for another term. Please consider this letter as notice that I am once again seeking an appointment to the board. And then we have a letter from J. Dunham, Acting Chair of the Democratic Town Committee. It's directed to me. He indicates a response to your letter dated February five, two thousand and twenty-one. The Wilmington Democratic Town Committee approved the reappointment of Mary H. Osgood at our March first meeting to the Board of Registars position. Mary has been quite active with the Board of Registars since her initial appointment by the Board of Selectmen in April two thousand and eighteen, and has added value to the functioning of the Board of Registars. We have been quite pleased with her performance in holding the electoral process in the Town of Wilmington. Please let me know if you would like me or someone else from the Wilmington Democratic Town Committee to attend the Board of Selectmen's meeting when this position is on the agenda. We believe that Mary has earned reappointment to the position. Thank you. J. Dunham.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hall. Next up is our Board to Consider. First item number six, Board to Consider Request from Arianna Gilmore for the use of the gazebo at the Town Common on August seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, from one PM to three PM for a wedding ceremony. She notes here in her application that she's only looking to use the gazebo, the wedding vow ceremony with about thirty guests. There will be no tents, no chairs, just people. Again, the request is for August seventh of this coming year, one to three PM. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Mason's been voted, made, and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I know we've talked about this in the past, when people are using gazebo for weddings and whatnot, they realize that it's a public space, and that there is a playground there for kids, children, and families. So that won't be stopped, as long as they know about it.
That's right. That will be included in the letter.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions, comments?
Just wish her well and thank her for picking Wilmington, because it looks like she's not a local resident. So obviously, our common looks especially enticing for such a special occasion.
Absolutely. Wish her great weather, and I know a lot of wedding venues are packed up. We are not, so we still have a few weekends available. All right. With that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations to the bride-to-be.
And the groom.
And the groom. Well, I did want to say anything. Next up is a Board to Consider for the Approval of the Second-Hand Dealer License for GameStop. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Awesome.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just for the, just for the record, I would note that there is a recommendation from the Police Chief Joseph Desmond upon review to the Wilmington Police Department, the pool of Anthony Liddeto, manager, application to renew the second-hand dealer license. We also have a note from the Fire Chief Liam Kavanaugh. I review the application to the second-hand dealer's license for GameStop. The fire department has no outstanding violations in conjunction with their address. I have no objection to the town allowing the renewal. We also have a letter from the Building Inspector Al Spalding. The building property has no issues with the issuance of the renewal of the second-hand dealer license for GameStop Inc., two forty-six, Main Street. And I think there is more. This final one is just a note from the Treasurer. You have passed due personal property balance of twenty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. Our record does not have an issue and recommended approval of their license.
Okay. We have a motion, correct?
Yes.
And a second? Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I can amend the motion to say that we approve this pending the fingerprinting that it looks like Mr. Hall's letter references, as well as the payment of the small personal property balance.
Good catch. Thank you. Motion's been made and amended. Is there a second to that amended motion? Second is to the farmer. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Item number eight is the Board to Consider Appointments and Reappointments to the Animal Control Officer, the Board of Appeals, Board of Registars, Council on the Arts, Council on the Arts Advisory Board, Fence Viewer, Town Council, Special Council, and Constables. Mr. Hall?
Yes. So in each of these cases, just to go through the list, we have Animal Control Officer, one-year term to expire two thousand and twenty-two, Christopher H. Sullivan. Board of Appeals, five-year term to expire two thousand and twenty-six, Jacqueline Santini. Board of Registars, three-year term to expire two thousand and twenty-four, Mary H. Osgood. Council for the Arts, two-year term to expire two thousand and twenty-four, Louise A. Anderson, Jean A. Chang, Jeanette A. Colbert. Council for the Arts Advisory Board, one-year term to expire two thousand and twenty-two, Serati Brook. Fence Viewer, one-year term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, Paul Looney and John T. Spalding. Town Council, one-year term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, K.P. Law. Special Town Council, one-year term to expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, Daniel R. Deutsch of Herb Brooks and Durensis. And then with regard to Constables, either one-year terms to expire two thousand and twenty-two, Barbara J. Colla, Jason F. Costa, Eric R. Randall, John B. Bridges, Jr. We note this, these next few are restrictions, no soliciting clients authority to serve civil process or clients who need service in Wilmington. This also applies to Paul D. Lewis, Jr., Ronald M. DiGiorgio, and Dennis C. Otis, William F. Appelcelli, and Anthony J. Seas.
Okay. Having heard the appointments and reappointments, is there a motion?
Um, Mr. Chair, Russell Christopher Sullivan, the constable, Ellisian Williams, and Michael Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Yes, Christopher H. Sullivan, only in conjunction with his duties as Animal Control Officer. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I, Selectman Appelcelli. Is there discussion? Hearing done. Call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item number nine is the Board to Consider the Ratification of the Town Managers' Appointments and Reappointments to the Commission on Disabilities, Historical Commission, and Permanent Building Committee. Mr. Hall?
Yes. With regard to these appointments, the Commission on Disabilities, so we have an unexpired term for two thousand and twenty-three. This is the Selectmen's representative. Also on the Commission on Disabilities, three-year terms to expire two thousand and twenty-four, Adriana H. Pharoah, Brooke Green. The Historical Commission, three-year terms to expire two thousand and twenty-four, Paul L. Schalford, and Diane T. Harvey. L. Schalford and Diane T. Harvey. We have vacancy on the Historical Commission, unexpired term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Vacancy exists as a consequence of the individual who was previously serving seeking a spot on the Library Trustees, so there is a vacancy there. Permanent Building Committee, three-year terms to expire two thousand twenty-four, Diane M. Allen and Paul J. Melrani. And we have currently a vacancy on the Permanent Building Committee, an expired term of two thousand twenty-two, so I'll be looking to make an appointment there.
Okay. I'd like to thank each of those who have decided not to continue their service, but thank them for their service.
So, Mr. Chair, I would just note if there is any consideration for a representative from the Board of Selectmen to serve in that post on the Commission on Disabilities, perhaps it would be a good time to consider that.
Absolutely. Anybody like to make a nomination for someone from this board to serve on the Commission on Disabilities?
I would nominate Gary DePalma, second.
We have a nomination as a motion by Mrs. Omohony, seconded by Mrs. Selly. Any discussion? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. DePalma. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Okay, with that taken care of.
So, Mr. Chair, I would just ask that the Board ratify the remaining, yeah, votes.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to ratify the remainder of the listed names and positions?
Chose a judge.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? That's also unanimous. Thank you very much. And item number ten, Mr. Hall's Announcement to His Appointees to Various Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Mr. Hall?
These appointments, one-year term, Animal Inspector, Christopher H. Sullivan, term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Building Inspector, one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-two. John T. Spalding. Michael P. Desmond is the alternate inspector. Counter Electric Fund Committee, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. E. N. H. Burkhouse and Margaret A. St. Ange. Cemetery Commission, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. John P. Pushing. Conservation Commission, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. Vincent LaCarty. And I also have a vacancy that we're looking for to fill shortly. Elderly Services Commission, unexpired term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Nancy A. Topic. Elderly Services Commission, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. Kenneth P. Arken, Electrical Inspector, one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Frederick Sutter. And Arthur T. Kelly is an alternate, as is James F. Largington, Jr. Gas Inspector, one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Paul J. Rathie. John Maitech, Jr. is the alternate. Board of Pelt, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. Jane Anne Williams Dale, M. D. Library Trustees, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. Daniel J. Paul and Megan E. Delamonte Coslick. And she is the individual I mentioned earlier that was leading the Historical Commission to pursue this spot. Planning Board, five-year term to expire two thousand twenty-six. Sean T. Ergen. Plumbing Inspector, one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Paul J. Rathie and John Maitech, Jr. is the alternate. Public Ware, one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Christopher Dindo. Reading Municipal Light Department Advisory Board, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. George W. Cooper. The Second Recreation Commission, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. Sarish Alabath and Laurie Obarge. Trustee of Trust Funds, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. Brian Perry, Penny Lynn Dudley and Imola L. Kentsey. Veterans Agent, one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Louis Semaglia, Fourth. Veterans Grave Officer, one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Louis Semaglia, Fourth. Water and Sewer Commission, three-year term to expire two thousand twenty-four. Robert W. Levita. Wiring Inspector, one-year term to expire two thousand twenty-two. Frederick Sutter. Arthur T. Kelly is the alternate, as is James F. Largington, Jr.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hall. There's no vote required here, but does anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move to our final Board to Consider, which is our summer meeting schedule. And if you'll take a look, we are proposing the evenings of July twelfth and August sixteenth. And on our agenda, just to be clear, the dates on the agenda are the ones we're looking for. I know it's different on the calendar. Might have been a typo. Want to make sure it's the twelfth and the sixteenth. And I know that sometimes we're running into people's vacations and trying to avoid some wedding anniversaries that we've been known to hold meetings on.
So, on August ninth?
Yes, so just want to be clear, Mr. Hall, we're voting on what we see on the agenda and not the calendar that was provided.
Correct.
Okay. So, yes, the Consider, the dates we propose are July twelfth and August sixteenth. Does anybody have any objection? Conflicts, concerns? I can remember my very first year on the Board, Selectman O'Connell was kind enough to motion to move the July meeting so that I could have my first wedding anniversary, therefore saving my marriage. Okay. Hearing no objection. Is there a motion to hold our meetings in the summer of July twelfth and August sixteenth? So, thank you. Is there a second? Motion's been made by Mr. DePalma, seconded by Mrs. Omohony. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. So, we'll be on July, Monday, July twelfth and Monday, August sixteenth. All right, at this time, we are on to public comment. Before I read the number, Mr. O'Neill, do we have anybody calling?
Yeah, we do not.
Okay. I'll read the number, just in case you haven't memorized it by now. You can call in and make your public comment by dialing one six four six five five eight eight six five six and entering the meeting ID eight four five nine eight 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 four nine one one, then press pound, then press pound again on your telephone keypad. You'll want to press star nine to let the host know you'd like to speak. Also, the instructions are on screen. Thank you so much. Mr. O'Neill, we have anybody calling in?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
There's no objection, we'll move on. Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Omohony?
I couldn't let this evening pass without pointing out something significant that's occurring here tonight that none of us are probably consciously aware of, but should be. Seventy-four years ago, Wavy Drew became the first female Board of Selectmen member, and she served until nineteen seventy-one. Following her was Madeline Mackey, then Diane Allen, Suzanne Sullivan, Judy O'Connell, and then myself. Tonight marks the first time two women get to sit on the Wilmington Board of Selectmen in two thousand and twenty-one. So, I felt I had to welcome Selectman Miss Selly to the table. And I wanted to point out, I made a joke in two thousand and nineteen when I ran and won with my friends that I would only wear pantsuits and I would have lapel pins so that I would fit in, and they all bought me lapel pins as jokes. Tonight's lapel pin says the future is female, and I've never worn it because as I've sat here, my colleagues have never made me feel like my gender was any different or somehow my gender made me any different from the rest of them. So, I've never worn this until tonight. I wear it tonight in honor of you. In honor of this, and I want to give it to you so that you have it. So, that's, that's my announcement. And I'm sorry I got emotional, but.
No, I, I.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie. I did think of that, not in depth like you did, but that this was the first time that two women were sitting on the board, so I think it's great.
I was addressing high school kids, and it was when I became aware of it, when you, when it was official that you were going to be uncontested, and I noted it to them. And I think that's why I was emotional because like some of the girls.
It's awesome.
At the high school couldn't believe that in two thousand and twenty-one, that that was even a real thing, you know? And I loved that. I loved that to them it shouldn't matter. And I know for us it doesn't, but I couldn't let tonight go without noting it.
Well, thank you very much for pointing that out, and I think we can all agree it is a historic moment. So, thank you, Mrs. Omohony, and thank you to the, those who trailblazed the path for you both to be here, and we're very proud to serve them. Thank you very much. Mr. DePalma?
Mr. Chairman, I, it's a question. I don't know how to go about. I am going to be requesting, I'd like to request that the name of the Board of Selectmen be changed to the Select Board in honor of women all over that are running for these positions now.
Okay.
I don't know what the procedure or policy is on asking for something like that.
I'll probably kind of yield to you, Mr. Hall, but I know this has come up in the past. This is, I believe, would require a town meeting vote. Is that correct? Would the article, sponsorships change in the bylaws?
I believe it would. I think the, it would, I want to defer to Town Council on this, but it's referenced in the Town Managers Act as Board of Selectmen, so it may require not only a town meeting vote, but a act of legislature, but certainly all of them.
Great. If you could, and get back to Mr. DePalma and all of us, it would be great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I forgot to thank Robert Hayes from the Wilmington Apple for fact-checking everything that I said.
He always does.
I know.
Not just you.
I know.
Thank you. Any other announcements? I have a couple, if I may. Again, I just want to congratulate you and welcome you to our board and really look forward to working with you. And congratulations to all who participated in this past Saturday's election, those who came out and voted, those who ran, those who won, those who came up short. Again, these are all volunteer positions, so we really appreciate people's willingness to step up, and as you know, it takes a lot to put yourself out there, and so we really appreciate everybody who participated. We want to remind everybody that the town meeting was going to be coming up under important dates, but I can't say it enough, our annual town meeting. I hope you've received this in your mailbox, the warrant articles, there are sixty-four of them, and so I hope you'll get a chance to look through these and join us on Saturday at nine o'clock at the Shrine's Auditorium, which is ninety-nine Fordham Road. We'll have a special town meeting, very early in the meeting, approximately nine fifteen as well. And so I really look forward to seeing all of you there. And lastly, I want to congratulate someone who grew up in Wilmington who's decided that he is going to retire from service to the town. Safety Officer Brian Moon started with the Highway Department way back when, grew up in town, and then served on the Wilmington Police Department for many years, twenty-plus years, and will be retiring shortly. We really appreciate Brian's service to our community. We wish him well. We wish him a long and healthy retirement. So, thank you to Officer Brian Moon for all his service to the town. And that's what, that's what I have. Any other announcements?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, boy, he's, he's retiring. That puts me a lot older since I coached him in football. But I too want to congratulate you on your election and all those that ran for office. It takes a special person to, to get out of here and run for office, and we have a lot of special people in Wilmington, and hopefully everybody came out the victor in running, so, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? New business, is there any new business?
Mr. Chair, I would just ask to speak to one issue. There was a post in the Wilmington Apple last week that addressed an article that is on the town warrant, and Selectman DePalma addressed an article, and specifically, at least in part, amongst other things, notes here, I have inquired with the town manager about any discussions he has had as the proponent about the project, but I've never gotten the answer that is satisfactory to me, which I can't, I don't really know what that is supposed to mean. I'm going to suggest that somehow I'm being underhanded. We've had conversations in the past. I've told him what I know about the project and that there have been conversations, but again, I try to be as forthcoming as I can. I would also note that the, there's a reference here as to why certain town officials are supporting an article that was unanimously disapproved by the Planning Board at the recommendation of our professional planning director. I would just note that there are many instances where I may disagree with votes taken by members of various boards, and I think that has happened on various occasions with individual board members disagreeing with votes by the Finance Committee or Planning Board or Conservation Commission. But I would note just for the record that with regard to the recommendation of the Planning Director, I was struck by that because to my knowledge, she's never made a recommendation, and I asked her about that today. She was on vacation last week, and she indicated to me via an email, it has come to my attention that it has been suggested that I provided a negative recommendation regarding Article sixty, rezoning from R sixty to Highway Industrial to the Planning Board. I did not provide a recommendation as to whether or not to support the article. I did provide zoning information on parcels in question and the surrounding area for context. I answered the Planning Board's questions, but never gave an opinion on whether to support or oppose the rezoning. From a technical planning perspective, highway industrial uses could possibly be appropriate in this area since they are currently located across the street. The site is proximate to Route ninety-three, and residential homes would not be impacted if access is off of Route one twenty-five. However, the appropriateness of the rezoning rests to the towns' residents as to how they see the area built out in the future. I hope this clears up any confusion that has been circulating.
Mr. DePalma, I want to give the opportunity you were mentioned.
Thank you. To start out with, I was in the impression the Planning Board, Planning Director was opposing the article, and as far as comments I made in that, I have told them, I've asked questions regarding this project, and I still feel that I never got a complete satisfactory answer. I've, the curiosity I had was what was going there? Is it still talk, they still talking a hotel? Are they not talking a hotel? I think this is just an example of where the town has to relook how it handles things so that there isn't any confusion on what's going on. As far as my comment on certain officials and the town manager supporting the project even though the Planning Board rejected it, I understand that there's going to be differences in opinion constantly, but when I see the town manager coming out at a committee meeting and actually sounding like a cheerleader for the project, I think that's where we have to slow down, and we've still got to start looking at things in a different manner. I understand the financial benefits to this project, and I understand where the town manager would be supporting because of the finances, the new tax, new tax field revenues, but to... but to support it in such a strong manner when his planning board had rejected it, I just think it's, I think it's a, it's absurd. You want to come out and support something, you support it. But as town manager, he has to look at all the departments that are taking, taking this matter into consideration, and if, if there's still to be support for, from a financial end of it, it's fine. We understand that the town is looking for new resources for finances, but to just come out, to come out as a cheerleader, I had people call me and say, is he a cheerleader for that? Me and the town manager, and I says, no, I says, he's just, when he's supporting an issue, he's going to support it strongly, and I disagreed with the way he supported it, and that's the way I felt, I feel, and that's the way I still feel. I, I feel that we've got to learn that if we're going to support, whether we're elected officials or where we work for the town in a capacity, that we, we have to address all issues pertaining to a project. There's many, there's many issues in this project that there's a lot of questions to, and I can understand, again, I can understand how you would want to, the town would want to come out and support because of financial reasons. Again, new tax revenue and everything else, but to come out so strongly, I just think it's absolutely wrong. I, I, I just, just think it's wrong, absolutely. There's no, there's no consensus that your Planning Board's saying one thing, your Finance Board is saying another. Well, we know the Finance Board is looking at the financial package as a whole, the Planning Board's looking at it a different way, but to, to come out and support a project of this magnitude without the town really knowing what was going on at the time, I think is entirely wrong for the town. And that's all I have to say, and I addressed everything I felt in my letter, and I'm looking forward to going forward now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. DePalma, and if I could just, certainly I would imagine there'll be plenty of time for helping debate over that article and others, there's just a few things I want to point out, that there is precedent for Mr. Hall, just in my, my short time here, to have, you know, voiced support for particular articles. I can recall when the town was considering whether to take on its first TIF agreement with analog devices, I remember how vocally in support you were at the time, and at the town meeting, it was, you know, it was, we had overwhelming support in the past, and we were, we did it. So there is precedent, and I would imagine in Mr. Hall's nearly 30-year career here in Wilmington, that there's been other times where you have come out and supported articles, I certainly can't, I don't attest to be able to name them all right there tonight, but Mr. Hall, I just want to ask you, just so we can be clear for the record here tonight before we move on, you read a recommendation, I don't want to, I'm hesitant to call it a recommendation from Ms. Gingrich, but her testimony on thoughts on it. The Water and Sewer Department head, DBW, they also have no objection to this project?
Mike Woods, the Director of Public Works, is certainly interested in the prospect of having one piece of that property potentially provided to the town as a buffer to our grounds crossing wellfields, so, I mean, he's, his focus is obviously, at least in part, trying to protect our remaining sources of drinking water in town, and the opportunity to have the, essentially a piece of property that is in the midst of the source of that water is highly advantageous in his opinion.
Okay, and again, I don't want to get into a debate over, I just want to make sure we have evidence so people can make their, an educated decision on Saturday.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe that this is the place and time for it. If you want to debate this, I'll turn to the camera and I'll ask people to call in and debate it. I don't feel that this is the time, again, the place that is going to be at the town meeting, and if you want to scold me, you can scold me at town meeting, but I think it's offensive right now for us to be debating it. If, again, if you want, if you want to bring this up for a matter of debate right now, I'm going to ask people to call in and voice their opinion too. That's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DePalma, I would just say two things. Number one, I'm not in the business of scolding anybody, and even my four-year-old, and I'm having trouble doing that at home, but I did just mention, I think in my previous comments that we're working on a debate, that I just want to make sure we had the facts straight for what was referenced in Mr. Hall's comments. So absolutely agree with you that we'll have plenty of time to debate this at town meeting, that's the appropriate place for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there any other new business? Seeing none, we have two more things on the agenda. Mr. Hall, important dates, please?
Yes, important dates, April 37th is the Ice Spring and Recreation Meeting, virtually 7:00 PM. May 1st, Annual Town Meeting, 9:00 AM. Special Town Meeting, 9:15 AM. Shrine's Auditorium, 99 Fordham Road. May 3rd through May 7th, Curbside Collection Yard Waste. May 8th, Household Hazardous Waste Day, Municipal Parking Lot, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. May 10th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, Town Hall, 7:00 PM. May 13th, Community Candlelight Vigil, Town Common, 7:00 PM. May 29th, Decoration of Graves Wildwood Cemetery, 8:00 AM. Donation, Decoration of Hearts, Squares, and Monuments, also on May 29th. May 30th, Rededication of Hearts, Squares, and Monuments, Wilmington Memorial Library, 12:00 noon, Police Station Monument, 1:00 PM. Memorial Shrine at St. Thomas's of Illinois, Veterans Monument at Town Common, 1:15 PM. May 31st, Memorial Day Parade, 10:00 AM. Memorial Day Ceremony, Wildwood Cemetery, Veterans Lot, 11:00 AM.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Final item on our agenda, I'm proud to continue Mr. Eaton's salute to service tonight, and tonight we honor Richard Dick Hayden. Dick was extremely proud of his service with the United States Marine Corps. He enlisted in September 4th of 1957 and was honorably discharged in 1960. Dick and his wife Joan, in many years, moved to Wilmington in 1966, and they raised a beautiful and very large family, including six children and 18 grandchildren. And Dick was very active in town, as many of you know who knew Dick here, I had the good, very good fortune of knowing Dick personally through our involvement at the Knights of Columbus, and we had many of conversation, whereas somebody who grew up in this community felt very lucky to be able to lean on someone like Dick for advice, and he shared many of stories, and I'll be forever grateful for them, but I wanted to point out tonight that every single time Dick shared a story with me, and I'm sure with others, it started or ended with him bragging about how proud he was of his family. And so we are, our thoughts and prayers are with his family. Dick sadly passed away on April 12th at the age of 82. We are forever grateful for his service to our country and to our community. So tonight, Mr. Hayden, we thank you for your service, and we salute you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Good night, everybody, thank you.